Are you, uh, okay? Are you ready to start?
I'm starting.
Yeah. One minute.
Move it to the relocate and move it to the end of the agenda. Can we pull it off to the end of the agenda until such time we have work?
We're good to go.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock. All right, good morning. Um, you're, uh, this is the Palm Beach County Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, today is, uh, August third, uh, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, can you call the roll, please?
Sherry Pavlik.
Here.
John Kern.
Here.
Mike Kelly. Glenn Gromen.
Here.
Sherry Sparzbro. Lisa Reviss.
Here.
Alex Brumfield. Mark Beatty.
Here.
Jess Sauer.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Um, opening prayer, pray to the legions.
Please stand and join me in the opening prayer. Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our country or county. Help us listen with open minds to matters that are more important before us and act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds opened and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the, uh, the zoning commission of Palm Beach County was convened at nine o'clock AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC one W forty-seven, twenty-three North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, land developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type-two variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type-two variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of the staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissions of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at three oh one North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, at nine thirty AM on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Proof of publication of a motion?
Yes, we have proof of publication.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kern, second by Commissioner Pavlik. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, swearing in, anyone wishes to address the commission this morning, please stand up and be sworn in.
Like the chair said, anyone wishing to speak or testify on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. And repeat after me.
Don't have memories?
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Uh, please let the record show, Commissioner Brumfield has, uh, has it, uh, has arrived. Okay. Um, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve and adopt the minutes?
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Kern, uh, seconded by Commissioner Pavlik. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendments to the agenda. We had a-
Yes, we have a few amendments to our agenda. Item number four, ZB ABN DOA W two thousand twenty-two zero one three one two posh hospitality. We have a modification to our variance chart as well as modifications to our development order amendment, um, contained in Exhibit C two for the addition of engineering conditions two, three, four, five, six, and seven. On the regular agenda, item number six, ZB PDD CA two thousand twenty-two one seven eight five B C commerce, type-two variance modification to the all-petition condition as well as condition number three for inadvertent extra number and the compliance condition referencing the zoning commission. Item number seven, Logan Ranch, which is two thousand twenty-two seventeen fifty-five, there's a modification to variance condition, uh, condition number one, and a correction in the, uh, heading for the official zoning map amendment, um, where there were some letters not included.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Wait, momento. Uh, any request to pull any items off the consent agenda? Nope, okay, now you can go.
Okay, motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Pavlik, seconded by Commissioner Beatty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Uh, disclosures for any of the agenda items.
Mr. Chair, um, I spoke to Malcolm Butters and Jennifer Morton on regular agenda items number six and seven. Number six was just, um, Malcolm Butters and Jennifer Morton, and it was just Jennifer Morton for item seven, to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
No disclosure.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I spoke to, uh, the applicant, Mr. Jelsamino, on item number seven.
No disclosures.
Okay, um, I did talk to, um, the applicant on, uh, on the postponed, um, application on Southampton P U D, um, so I, that one is postponed, but I did talk to the applicant. Okay, um. Any conflicts? Or recusals?
Uh, yes, uh, I, uh, recuse myself on item number two as my firm, Architecture Green, has, uh, several contracts with Palm Beach County for design services, and I'm recusing myself on five, six, seven, as my firm has retained Jennifer Morton's company for landscape design services on some of those county projects.
I also have a conflict and recusal on, uh, consent agenda, item number two. My company, White's Construction, has, is doing work with Palm Beach County.
Thank you. No recusal. Okay, and I too need to recuse myself from item B two, um, as my firm is the architect for the, um, for the fire station. Okay. So moving on to the, um, oh, we need a approval for the consent agenda. We do have a quorum, we did confirm that. Oh, the postponement, sorry.
So item number one, DOA two thousand twenty-two one 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 nine Southampton, no motion is necessary, um, they are administratively postponed to September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. So that'll bring us to the consent agenda, and with, uh, recusals on item number two, we'll need to split it in the motions, so.
Okay, so just for the clarity out there, that, um, if anyone's here for the Southampton P U D, um, that has been postponed till, uh, till next month, September-
Seventh.
Seventh. Okay? Will letters go out? No. Cause it's a time certain, a date certain, uh, so no letters will be sent. So let everybody know that, uh, it will be next, next month. Thank you. Um, okay, on the consent agenda, when, who wants to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve items three and four on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Pavlik. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number two on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a, uh, motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Gromen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, on to the regular agenda.
That will bring us to item number five, PDD two thousand twenty-two fourteen seventy, EJKJ Industrial. The request before the board is an official zoning map amendment for rezoning from the Ag Reserve zoning district to the multiple-use plan development district on eight point one one acres, and I will turn it over to the applicant, um, for a presentation.
Good morning, I'm Lauren McClellan with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. Um, this item probably would have been on consent, um, except for a conflict for Jay Morton with, uh, Commissioner Beatty. Uh, we agree with all the conditions, I can go through a presentation if you want, I'll leave it to the commission's discretion.
Has everyone reviewed their package, any kind of questions that, uh, you need to see the presentation? I'm seeing unanimous consensus from the board that, that you're good. Staff?
If there's no questions, we don't need free presentation.
Okay.
There is a public comment card on, uh, yes, on item number five, it's just in support they do not wish to speak, so just for the record.
Okay, thank you. You're good. So at this time, any kind of comments from the, uh, from the public on this item? Just the one card, okay?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of item five A.
Second.
Five? It's for six and seven, I don't have anything for five.
Okay, this is item five, just for clarity, so. Okay, all right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kern, we have, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Gromen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
That'll bring us to item number six, ZB PDD CA two thousand twenty-two zero one seven eight five B C commerce. We have several requests before the board, which includes a type-two variance for a hundred percent buffer overlap and a preserve, an official zoning map amendment for rezoning from the Ag Reserve zoning district to the multiple-use plan development district, Class A conditional use to allow a brewery, distillery, manufacturing, and processing with a taproom, and then a Class A conditional use for limited access self-service storage. I'll turn it over to the applicant for a presentation.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, my name is Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. Thank you for the opportunity to present the B C Commerce project to you today. Um, I'd like to start out by introducing our team. Uh, this project is a collaboration between Channing Corporation and the Butters Corporation. Uh, with me today is, uh, John Channing and his two sons, Zach Channing and Seth Spiegel. We also have our engineer represented today with Brian Kelly of Simmons and White. They did both the traffic and the civil engineering. Um, and this project is, uh, was truly a collaborative effort between, um, the residents that live in the community and the developer, and I think that as I get into the project, you'll see that we were able to incorporate the community's vision for the development of this site. So the property is located in the Ag Reserve. It's unique in that it abuts three roads along our eastern property line, we abut the Florida Turnpike ramp, along our southern property line, we abut Boynton Beach Boulevard, and along the western property line, we abut Acme Dairy Road. North of the subject site are some wholesale nurseries and, uh, preserve parcels. If you look at the Boynton Beach Boulevard corridor, you can see some commercial developments at the intersection of Lyons Road and Boynton Beach Boulevard. We have Cobblestone Plaza and Canyon Trail Shopping Center. We also have a school, the Sunset Palms Elementary and Middle School, and then south of, um, Boynton Beach Boulevard on Acme Dairy Road is the Canyon District Park that just recently, uh, did a ribbon cutting last year. Um, directly west of the site, uh, the site property is under construction for commercial self-storage facilities. So this project is, um, in the process for a land use change to commerce. Commerce is a new land use category that, um, actually, uh, the zoning director, Lisa Amara, helped develop the text language for that when she was with the planning department. It came about because there were many, um, several projects that were going through the system requesting industrial, and industrial allows very intensive industrial uses that would qualify as heavy industrial, and the county didn't have a light industrial category. So the commerce land use category was developed, and that is what we are requesting. Um, when we submitted our land use plan request, um, it was recommended for approval by staff, planning commission, um, uh, recommended approval, and the board has since transmitted our request for commerce for this project. It's waiting for adoption, it's waiting for its companion zoning application, which is what we're presenting to you today. So we are requesting to rezone the property to M U P D. We have M U P D to the west of us, um, you can see a large portion of the corridor, a Long Boynton Beach Boulevard, is designated as M U P D or is requesting M U P D. Those two properties south of us are in request for an M U P D, uh, zoning request. As staff mentioned, we're asking, uh, approval or a recommendation of approval for rezoning from AGR to M U P D. We have two conditional use requests, one for self-storage, the second for a taproom in conjunction with a brewery, and third is a variance request to allow a hundred percent of our buffer to overlap the preserve area. So this is a graphic that demonstrates the proposed site plan. Um, as I mentioned, the property's forty-seven acres in size, and we have both a development area and onsite preserve area. The development area is just over thirty-four acres in size, and the preserve area is just over twelve acres in size. We're proposing six hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven square feet of industrial use, uh, that equates to a point three two F A R. When we started this process, the commerce land use category allowed a point four five F A R. When we went to planning commission, we agreed to a condition that limited us to point three five, and ultimately, at time of development of our site plan, we're actually only at point three two. So, um, although it would allow almost a million square feet, we're at six hundred and fifty-nine, which is well below what is allowed. Um, the building heights are staggered, um, and I'm gonna get into height just, uh, in a little bit, but we have buildings proposed between twenty-one feet and fifty feet, and probably what we're most excited about, excited about are the uses that we're proposing for this project. Um, we have some office warehouse use, we have some uses that are identified as fitness rec, we have a brewery which includes a taproom, eh, which falls under the manufacturing and processing category, and we have the self-storage. Before we started developing the site plan for this project, we met with the communities located within the Ag Reserve, primarily the communities south of Boynton Beach Boulevard along Acme Dairy Road. They indicated that they wanted, that they could support a commerce land use category as long as it incorporated some uses and some benefit to the residents that live there. Um, they envisioned, um, some active, um, indoor rec uses, um, they envisioned the brewery. Actually, the brewery was the vision of the community, so we've worked closely with them, staff has been involved, especially with the brewery language, um, that was critical during the text amendment process, and so we're coming before you with a plan that truly was a collaborative effort. And so, you know, the brewery, those are very, that's a very popular use now, it's a very family-oriented use, um, people take their kids there, they, uh, take their dogs, sometimes there's some outdoor, uh, areas, and you'll see on our site plan that we include that. One potential tenant that our client is talking to is a, uh, rock climbing, uh, organ, uh, group, and, um, they have facilities throughout the country, this fits in line with what the community was looking for and seems very excited about this potential user. And of course, we all know the pickleball is probably the fastest-growing sport in America, and, um, I've worked on many communities, they wanna look for any scrap of land where they can put a pickleball court. The newer communities are all planning for pickleball, um, but we don't really have any indoor pickleball facilities, and in the summertime, it's really hot, so this is a great use for this, for this, um, project. I think the residents, again, are excited about this use, it will bring families and community together, and, uh, we see a lot of benefit here. And then, just in general, some indoor recreational uses, one of the residents mentioned that they drive, um, jump on the turnpike and go down to Broward County to take their daughter to, uh, cheer, uh, camp, and so we really envision there being, um, those uses that you see in office, um, industrial areas being, being more active, um, being more recreational in nature, being located in this, um, project and in this facility. We do have a few conditions of approval that we're working with staff on, um, I was on vacation last week, I know the zoning director was on vacation last week, and so we are just highlighting some conditions that we need to work through with staff, I think that we, they are workable, um, and so I just wanna, um, mention them briefly and then, uh, um, put them on the record, and then we'll continue to work with staff on it. The first one is on page, um, fifteen, it's a use limitation, uh, the code limits the, um, fitness center use to twenty percent of the project, we're fine with that, we, our plan, uh, has fitness, has the fitness center use as twenty percent of the overall project, um, however, we know that we're gonna be in for building A, um, initially, building A is our fitness center building, and maybe one or two of the office warehouse buildings, and so we won't be able to, um, meet that concurrent twenty percent requirement. And, you know, it's not as if each building has twenty percent fitness and eighty percent industrial. We will commit that at project build-out, we'll turn in a spreadsheet, and we will, uh, meet the twenty percent, um, maximum, uh, recreational, um, use requirement. And the, um, a couple of other conditions, we're still working through staff, I know it's the intent to have some outdoor, uh, walking trails with benches and to have some food trucks, and, um, you know, maybe the brewery overflows into the passive, um, recreational area. This is a determination that the Board of County Commissioners will have to make on whether they see that as an allowable use, so we will be talking to the board about, about the vision and intent, and, um, the, you know, as the client has gone out and started working with tenants and trying to get LOIs and get tenants signed up, um, a lot of the details are come, are being flushed out as far as the building design. When we first submitted the plan and the plan that got certified, we were proposing that building C be our, our brewery and taproom. One of the tenants that we're talking to actually may wanna go in building A, so we wanna see if we can work with staff to provide some flexibility, whether the building is limited to, um, building B or building A, but just again, providing that flexibility is important to the developer. Next is the variance, so, uh, we have, we are requesting a variance for our north property line. We think that the project is better when we locate the required buffers along the perimeter of the project rather than between the development area and the preserve. So we've located our required buffers around the perimeter of the site, and you can see along the north property line, that's where we've located a large swath of our preserve, it helps to act as additional separation to those nursery uses to the north. The variance is only for the overlap, it, it does not, we're maintaining the required planting material, we're proposing, we're, we're including a wall, in fact, we have a condition that requires additional landscaping along our north property line, which we have agreed to. And I think one of the, I'm gonna go back, one of the great things about this project, so the developer is the Channing Group, they developed PGA Commons along PGA Boulevard, I think P, their project is probably, um, the, the go-to project that a lot of design firms and a lot of, um, planning firms look to, to see how they designed the PGA Boulevard corridor, um, now it's become the gold standard, so we have that knowledge and that background as part of our team, they've done it before on PGA Boulevard, and they're looking to incorporate a lot of those design principles along Boynton Beach Boulevard. This is a vignette that was prepared, there is a sidewalk on Boynton Beach Boulevard, we're proposing, we have a buffer that ranges anywhere from forty-five feet to like seventy-five feet, we plan to incorporate a meandering path, um, a native plant material, undulating berms, and so really a very nice streetscape, and these are some vignettes that, um, the client has been working on. And then the, the last condition that we're still, uh, kinda working with staff on, um, is the building height, you know, we have the building, the self-storage building that's identified as fifty feet, um, what we found out is our rock climbing use needs to be able to punch up the roof to forty-five feet, so thirty-five feet doesn't, doesn't work- So 35 feet doesn't, doesn't work for them. So we're going to talk to staff to see if there's the ability to take a portion of a building and bump it up to 45 feet to be able to accommodate the rock climbing use. And as they are discussing the uses with other tenants, we just want flexibility with the height. We're not, you know, other than the rock climbing and the self-storage, we're asking that everything be limited to 35 feet. But again, we'll continue after, probably over the next two weeks, working with staff on the conditions. As far as height, I think you are going to hear from people in the audience about height. I just want to note that the highest point that we're requesting is a 50-foot building for our self-storage facility. It's consistent with the corridor. If you look to the west of us, there's a self-storage facility that's 45 feet in height. The Sunset Palms Middle and Elementary Schools, their plans were originally 55 feet in height and then the hospital has a note of 100 feet in height. So the 50-foot height is consistent with the corridor. And this is a rendering that the client had prepared to show the quality of architecture that he's proposing. You can see the articulation along the roof line and you can see the articulation along the facade and you can see the glass. So it's a, a quality project for the area. Finally, I know circulation and access is important. We have, on Boynton Beach Boulevard, we have one entrance. We have a right in, a right out and a left in. We are constructing a right turn lane for this project. In addition, we are proposing to construct a second right turn lane from Boynton Beach Boulevard onto Acme Dairy Road. And then we're constructing a third right turn lane from Acme Dairy Road into our project. And this is at the request of the resident from the north of, north of here. We've done a lot of community outreach, a lot of meetings and it's really, this project is the culmination of input from the residential community. We respectfully request approval of the project and we commit to working with the county staff on the conditions of approval. I'm here to answer any questions if you may have them.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I do, Jennifer, I do have one question or a couple of questions regarding the height.
Okay.
You have a, the self-storage building, you're saying is going up to 55. Which, which building is that on the site plan?
That is in the lower, the southeast corner of the property. That's the self-storage building.
Southeast corner.
Yes, southeast. So I don't know if the...
The bottom.
The bottom.
Right building.
On the east side, right at the turnpike and Boynton Beach Boulevard intersection.
Okay. And then the rock climbing is going to go in which building?
The fitness center building, it would call that building A. And it is going to go in there somewhere. So that building is 680 feet in length. So we probably need approximately 200 feet to bump up the roof to 45 feet for the rock climbing.
And the remainder of the buildings will be what height?
35.
35.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll need to get 30.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Torres. The application under discussion is located on a 47.21 acre slot at the northeast corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road, immediately west of the side of the turnpike. As Jennifer mentioned before, the site has an AER future land use designation with the AER zoning districts and is right now under evaluation for a future land use change. The requests in front of you are for a type 2 variance, an official spending amendment and two class A conditional uses. The rezoning to the MUPD will allow the development of commercial industrial recreational uses. Access to the site are from Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. The preliminary site plan indicates the following. Eight buildings with a total of 660,000 square feet, which include four warehouses, two fitness centers, one self-service storage and one manufacturing processing brewery, distillery with a taproom as an accessory use. In addition to this, the development is proposing a total of 938 parking spaces with a proposed type 1 waiver for a parking reduction of 166, 65 spaces. The site plan shows a 12.5 acre preserve water management and detention tract located at the northern boundary of the site, avoiding the existing agricultural uses. These result in a separation of almost 200 feet from the closest building to the northern property. The placement of the preserve along the northern property line increases the separation from the properties to the north, providing a better compatibility. The proposed buildings, as Jennifer mentioned, range from 25, 25 feet to 50 feet in height and exceed the required setbacks. And here I need to mention that in the staff report that was published, there is a error that we need to fix. The staff report indicates that the buildings, the maximum height of all building was supposed to be 35, but it's actually 50 feet instead. The elevation that Jennifer presented, staff hasn't had the chance to review them yet, so we cannot comment on them at this moment. However, they will need to provide elevation for their approval as indicated on article 5C. The site plan also indicates a required right-of-way buffers along the south, east and west property line and the requiring compatible buffer along the north property line. This in order to further, I'm sorry, in order to further reduce the impact of the development in the surrounding areas, the staff has added several conditions of approval in regards to landscape, parking and loading and use limitation which prohibit outdoor events, seating or music. Some of these conditions are as a, as a result of a meeting that staff has with some of the neighbors to the, to the north side. In addition, there are two new conditions that were added to the add delete after it was published. That's what you can see on the screen. Staff has received, staff has received four letters from the public, including one from Cobra, received on July 21st. The letters did not express opposition on the application in itself, but did express concerns in regards to the following. Drainage, traffic in Acme, Acme Dairy Road, impact to the neighborhood, outdoor events and noise, pedestrian connectivity, outdoor storage, dumpster locations and limiting the building height to more, to no more than 35 feet. Some of these have already been addressed. The staff has analyzed the application and has determined that it is in compliance with the standards of the code, therefore is recommending approval of the request. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, having none. At this time, we have any cards?
We do. We have a few cards. So what I will do is I will read two different names. Please go to opposite podiums. When you get up, state your name and your address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. So first was Dagmar Ross and Becca, I'm just going to say Smith. We're going to miss, skip the middle one.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dagmar Ross. I'm a past president of Cobra and I've been working on the ag reserve for probably the last 35 years. We understand that there was a new category in the ag reserve introduced known as commerce. Cobra is very in support of the project. We are very grateful for how Morton Group and Mr. Butters and Mr. Channing have worked and tried to give us something different for the area so it wouldn't just be an industrial park. It would be something that the community could get involved with and we're really grateful. My issue is the fact that when you drive into the ag reserve now, the, once this is completed, if you approve this class A requested use for a storage facility, you are going to drive down Boynton Beach Boulevard and the first thing that you're going to see on the right side is a 50-foot tall concrete cube. It is, I believe, 75 or 45, 45 feet off of Boynton Beach Boulevard, I believe. I just don't think this is the right thing that we want to see to be introduced in the ag reserve. I'm glad you did call it to the attention and the fact that it is that building, the first thing that you're going to see in the right side. There's not even an undulating roof line. I mean, even if they tried to put it in the back to kind of hide it a little bit, it is going to be so obnoxiously blaring as you go down Boynton Beach Boulevard. We already have another storage facility that's under construction on the other side of Acme Dairy Road, probably a couple hundred feet away. It's been approved, it's being built, it is set back off of Boynton Beach Boulevard. There's already approval for another storage facility just on the other side of the turnpike in front of the Grove Community, which has not been built yet. And there's another approval for a storage facility just about a mile further down known as the Mizoni Property for another storage facility. And there's an existing storage facility just on the other side of the turnpike behind the fire station and the apartments on the turnpike just south of Boynton Beach Boulevard. You have the power to deny this class A registered use, requested use. It really is, is not what the look that we have, that, that we're working towards to have this concrete building being the first thing that you see. Yes, they did do PGA commons. Yes, they touted that it's beautiful. Yes, they do have a four-story and they are touting this as four stories, but it's 50 feet. My book says 10 feet per story. I think it's five feet, it's five stories. PGA commons storage facility that they're touting as being similar to this is set behind a hotel and a CVS pharmacy. It's not right on the major thoroughfare. Please, this is not the right place to put a storage facility in the ag reserve for something that we're looking to get a little bit of a, a feeling that you're going into the ag reserve. Across the street, we have a 200-foot setback. Here, it's not enough. Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Becca Smith and I live in Canyon Lakes at 8664 Wood Grove Harbor Lane. A year ago, the developer came to the Boynton AG Reserve Communities, of which Lakes is a member of, to discuss their plan for the BCC Commerce Project. As we worked collaboratively, we began to get excited about the uses that may be located on this property. Finally, we have a place to go by us for our families. Some of the uses, looking forward to include pickleball, rock climbing, gymnastics and especially the brewery. Part of the excitement is the ability to enjoy outdoors with friends and neighbors to sample local brews. We discussed this being an area where families can sit outside while their kids play, whether inside or outside. Many breweries have outdoor spaces for seating, giant Jenga and other similar yard games. We are not in favor of the limitation of outdoor seating and activities for the taproom because the fall and winter months are the best times of year to be outside and enjoying time with family. I think we all learned the importance of outdoor space during the COVID pandemic. When I moved to the canyons over 10 years ago, there was not much in the area for us for families. This project has caused great excitement in our community, recreational activities and a great brewery, even with live music would be an absolute gift for the West Point families. I wish additionally to add that I run all the social media for all the canyon communities, which is over 2,000 households every day. This support for the project has been overwhelmingly positive and it would be a great that you support the project and the proposed changes the developer is requesting. Thanks so much for your time and opportunity to be part of this exciting change for West Point families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Jeffrey Zerl, Zerl Nick and Tim Linkenos. Sorry about the pronunciation.
You're not the first and won't be the last. Good morning. My name is Jeff Zerl Nick. I live at 3582 Old Light Hill Circle, Wellington, but I serve as the CEO of JARQ Florida, which is a program that serves adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. I have known the Channing family for close to 50 years. I've known their involvement in the community. They also, they provide drivers for Meals on Wheels programs for the Jewish family services, of which JARQ provides the meals that are prepared. I know that they have been instrumental in other programs and services in the community and that their development projects have been held in the highest of esteem. As I mentioned, I serve as the CEO of a program for adults with developmental disabilities. As we all know, those individuals that have differences struggle in what they're able to and what they can get involved with, not only in this community, but around the country. This project is going to afford an opportunity, we have been invited, to create a community garden. A garden where these adults will be able to come, develop skills, learn and become caregivers as opposed to care receivers. They're going to be able to grow vegetables and fruits and, pun intended, receive the fruits of their labors by being able to take these products to create true farm-to-table growing, farm-to-table knowledge on food preparation and be able to take these fruits and vegetables to market where they can earn funds to support themselves. This project is going to be something that can be held up to the community and the support for the community for these individuals will create a statement of how this commission, the developers and our county at large can make a difference in the lives of adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. Please give this project every opportunity to succeed and approve these changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tim Linkus, 8289 West Point Beach Boulevard. I'm one of the owners of this parcel of land, along with my wife and my sister Sue Stewart. We've been there since 1978 and it's been a good run, but now it's over unfortunately. I feel that the Channings have listened to the residents that surround us and I support this project. I understand the opposition to the height. But we, right to the west of us is a storage unit that's going up, that's above 50. We've got the middle school that's just developed across the street. The height there is 50 feet and I really don't see a problem with that. So I support this and I hope you all will please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Sandra Linkus. Oh, she doesn't, oh, okay. All right, never mind.
Is that the last card?
That's the last card.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify one of the statements made by the applicant. She said that there will be three right turn lanes. Actually, there will be two right turn lanes, one at the entrance on Boynton Beach Boulevard and the other one at the entrance on Acme Dairy Road. There won't be any right turn lane on Boynton Beach Boulevard at Acme Dairy Road intersection. There will be a right-of-way dedication only, not construction of a right turn lane. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Any cross-examination? Others?
And on behalf of staff response to some of the statements made on the condition proposed for the relocation of the taproom, the taproom is accessory to manufacturing and processing. So we can discuss with the applicant relocating that as a pair, but not independent of the manufacturing and processing because it's, accessory and has to be connected. So just so you know, but we will continue to work as Jennifer said on any conditions of approval between now and the BCC. The other thing we would like to mention is our current site plan doesn't show a community garden, but that's something we can continue to discuss with the applicant moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, any cross? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, board discussion?
Well, I guess I will add, Carlos from stated already that the elevations, the conceptual elevations the applicant showed on the screen, they have not been reviewed by staff and staff will have to review them for compliance with article 5C. Article 5C has requirements for not only how the building and textures, the colors, it has to be consistent with the surrounding areas, there are roof line requirements, races and projections of the facade itself, types of windows and so forth. So when they're submitted, we will review for compliance, but we cannot confirm that the elevations that you show, were shown are consistent with the code.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Yeah, these are very... Yeah, these are very long buildings, you know, being warehouses, so I do have a concern over how those will be articulated, so.
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion to, or do we want to have discussion first?
I think we just need to, we can have discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, as long as it were on me. So, so I was on the planning commission when this came before us, and the planning commission voted in support, in support of this project. And one of the major reasons why, and it was a sub-motion, was the fact that the FAR was reduced to .32 from what could have been .45, which is rather significant. And there was, there was support from, from the, from the community. As far as the height scenario goes, staff has indicated that the height requests meet code, but I never quite understood the concept of not having some kind of articulation amongst the buildings. In other words, having everything exactly the same height is a classic recipe for the ugly look of urban sprawl. If you have a bigger building in front, or a bigger building in the back, or you have the articulation, that's a positive thing, and we've already heard from the applicant that there are, there are buildings that are, that are greater in height. And you might see a 50-foot building the first thing you come across the turnpike, but then there's the hospital, which is 100-foot, and you have another building that's 55-feet with the school. So I don't, I don't, I don't, a tall, a taller building never hurt anybody, and it's actually more efficient use of space, especially when the applicant has agreed to reduce the FAR significantly from what they could build. So I fully support this project, and I'm thankful for the neighbors coming out and actually coming out and supporting it as well.
Great, thank you.
If I could provide a response to that. So staff doesn't have any conditions restricting the height on this project. So the only thing that we've stated is that we do not have the elevations to review. So if they're proposing, at this point in time, the height for one building is 50 feet. The other buildings, as the applicant has proposed, is 35 feet, and then they made a presentation today to increase Building A to height, which we have not reviewed yet. So we will analyze that administratively. When an applicant presents heights to the board, they can only administratively increase those heights by 10%. So if they're presenting to the board a 35-foot-high building, administratively, we could only increase it without, when there's no conditions of approval, to 38 and 1/2 feet. So we have to discuss that height going up 10 more feet, so we know what's going on. This was given to us yesterday.
Sure.
And, and will that be on the actual site plan? Which buildings will be designated for what heights?
The, the plan right now shows the heights on it, so the self-service storage building right now is the only one that shows 50 feet. The other buildings that's indicated on the site plan that the applicant submitted are 35 feet.
Okay. And the only exception at this point is a pop-up in the one building for the rock climbing.
Building A for the rock climbing, yes, which we need to discuss further between now and BCC.
So I just wanted to clarify, so obviously, we've got everything in front of us that we've talked through with the applicant, with staff. So before BCC, I just want, you're going to see the elevations of all the buildings and then work through height and perhaps the community garden. All those things will be addressed before BCC?
I don't know if the applicant will be submitting all the elevations, but we at least need to discuss their proposed change for the 45-foot, because we weren't aware of that. That just came up yesterday.
Okay, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I, I agree with Commissioner Gromen that I think the undulation in the building heights is important, and that provides that texture, the variation in the skyline. I think that, that's a, a good thing to happen. And I think it's an appropriate place to put it, in the southeast corner for the highest one, because that's next to the turnpike, and there's no, there's not going to be any development on that corner. So, so I'm in favor for it, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve substantive conditions.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gromen, second by Commissioner Pavlik. Any?
So will that be for all four, or just one? Are you doing them individually or all four at the same time?
It would be more efficient to do all four at the same time.
Okay. Anybody clear about that? Okay?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, and that's been seconded. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we have a dissent from Commissioner, yeah. So a nay from Commissioner Rebus. Okay?
Yes, 5-1-1.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty has recused himself. Item, next item is item seven, Logan Ranch Residential.
Okay, Logan Ranch, item 20221755. The requests before the board include type-two variance for, to allow 100% buffer overlap in a preserve and an official zoning map amendment to allow rezoning from the multiple, from Ag Reserve zoning to multiple-use plan development. Can turn it over to the applicant for presentation.
This is, this is your meeting, isn't it?
I think it is. I think this is our corridor, actually, so. But yes, Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, representing the Logan Ranch project. Here with me today is our client and developer, Brett Gelsamino, as well as our engineer, Kimberly Horn, Chris Hagan, traffic engineer, and they're doing the Civil as well. So I'll just get into it. You all know this corridor. This, this property is 39.24 acres in size. It is located with 600 feet of frontage on Boynton Beach Boulevard and about 2,600 feet of frontage on Acme Dairy Road. So it's almost a half-mile of frontage on Acme Dairy Road. The uses along the corridor include commercial, institutional. We're directly across the street from the elementary and future middle school, as well as the district park, Canyon District Park. Just, I'm going to get into the presentation, but this just kind of shows you, we're proposing a residential development on this site. It'll have the required preserve and the proposed development area. As with the project across the street, this site is in for a land use change to essential housing. About a year, a year ago, year and a half ago, the board made the determination that the Ag Reserve should incorporate or include some workforce housing. Prior to the adoption of the essential housing land use category, the Ag Reserve was exempt from all workforce housing requirements and was primarily made up of million-dollar homes in the Ag Reserve. So we are trying to add some diversity to the Ag Reserve that was supported by the commission. There was one project approved along Atlantic Avenue, and this is the second application that has been submitted requesting essential housing. The surrounding land uses, to the north is the Commerce. To the east of the site, we have an application in for an institutional congregate living facility. It's known as Erickson Senior Living, that will be before this board in a couple of months. West of us is AGR, and south of us is AGR as well. As I mentioned, essential housing is a new land use category. This is a map that the county planning department prepared to identify which properties along Boynton Beach Boulevard would be eligible for the essential housing land use. There were three parcels identified. The property to the north is now known as B.C. Commerce. The property to the east is Erickson. So this is the only piece that is asking for essential housing. Of those three, of the three parcels, this is the only one that's coming forward. So I think it's a needed use in the Ag Reserve, and I'll get into that in a minute. We're requesting MUPD zoning. MUPD zoning is consistent with the essential housing. This is our site plan. Because it's such a long site, I am going to describe the elements of the site plan and show it with north pointing to the left-hand side of the screen. It allows me to give you a little bit more detail and to see the layout a little bit better. Again, the site is 39 acres in size. With the essential housing, we're allowed eight units to the acre. We're required to cluster those eight units to the acre on 40% of the land. So we have 60% of the land set aside as preservation. We are proposing 314 multifamily units. 79 of those units will be deed-restricted for workforce housing. And this is the ideal location for this project. We have both an elementary school and a middle school directly across the street. We have a hospital just down the street, and we actually, in the future, expect to have Erickson Senior Living to the east of us. So there's a lot of opportunities for people that work in the area, when this project is approved, would have the opportunity to live close to where they work. This developer and our office have worked with the community. When we first started, the question was, how close are your units going to be to the south property line? That community is known as Canyon Trails, and west of that is Canyon Lakes. We worked very closely with the residents to locate a majority of our preserve along our south property line. You can see that our two, we have a two product types, and one is a two-story product. It will look like a townhouse, but it will be a multifamily rental. That product type is set back 800 feet from our south property line. The multifamily project, or the multifamily also includes a four-story elevator product. So we have a diversity of housing within the development, and then our four-story is set back over 900 feet from our south property line. That's like three football fields. As you work your way around the project, it's not just our south property line, but Acme Dairy was also a focus of design, and we wanted to bring the preserve around Acme Dairy to, again, create additional setback to Acme Dairy from our two-story product and from our four-story product. So you can see, we continued the setback. And then as you work your way around to Boynton Beach Boulevard, you can see that those buildings are also set back 339 feet. And these setbacks are a direct result of working with the community and working with Cobra. Some of the earlier plans actually had all the units clustered up along Boynton Beach Boulevard, and after some meetings, we were able to bring the preserve around to pull those buildings back. So a lot of effort went into the design. This design is consistent with the Acme Dairy Road corridor as well. If you, so we're going to take a cross-section from the school to the two-story building, and you can see Acme Dairy is 95 feet a right-of-way. These buildings are set back. We are consistent with the Acme Dairy Road corridor. The variances that we are requesting are related to the buffer. It's the exact same thing that the board supported for the BBX project that was approved a couple of months ago. It's what you just supported across the street. It actually allows us to locate our required landscape, landscaping around the perimeter of the property. We're not proposing to reduce any of the landscaping. We're installing what's required around the perimeter. In addition, we have a condition requiring similar plant material to be utilized along Acme Dairy Road. Acme Dairy Road is developed and constructed all the way south, and this is the only portion of undeveloped land along Acme Dairy Road, and so we've committed to utilizing the same plant palette that, that has been utilized south of the project entrance. Again, this is, we do have a couple of conditions that we need to work through with staff. The first one is regarding the preserve and the passive park. We're proposing the project to incorporate a passive park in the preserve area, but we do want the flexibility to be able to have some bona fide ag, especially along the front. We're thinking of incorporating like a big area of sunflowers, maybe another community garden for the residents. So the passive park is part, is one of those uses that are included in the preserve area. Our passive park will connect to the project to the east of us. It's still very preliminary in design, but that's the intent, is to have a passive park along our southern property line. As part of that, we would, we commit to doing the landscaping that would be required for a public park in the passive park area. Those are those two conditions. We do have an engineering condition that requires a sidewalk to be constructed all along Acme Dairy Road. Right now, there's a sidewalk on the west side of Acme Dairy Road from Boynton Beach Boulevard all the way to the terminus of Acme Dairy where it's gated into another residential development. That's an existing sidewalk. There are no sidewalks on the east side of Acme Dairy Road. What our client is willing to do, he would like, he's proposing to construct a sidewalk from Boynton Beach Boulevard to our project entrance, which makes sense, because that actually is a natural terminus for that sidewalk. If he were to be required to construct it all the way to the end, it leads to nowhere, connects to nothing, and actually would require jaywalking to cut across Acme Dairy to get back on the sidewalk. So we are requesting that the sidewalk be from Boynton to Joe Abruzzo Parkway. And this is probably the biggest condition, that engineering condition that's been proposed that we are requesting to strike. Right now, we have a condition of approval that requires the developer of Logan Ranch to provide access for the residents of Erickson to come through his gated community to the access point on Acme Dairy at Joe Abruzzo Parkway. So when we first started this project, there was no interconnectivity, no cross-access. Logan Ranch stood on, on its, stood on its, with its own access points, and Erickson had its singular access point on Boynton Beach Boulevard. The developers are very friendly, they're working together on the passive park. They, there was discussions about cross-access. We were able to agree to a cross-access point in front of the gates, so the cross-access for air, from Logan to Erickson and Erickson to Logan is in front of both of those communities' gates. And we're showing that on our plan, and our client agrees to that. He does not agree to allow all of Erickson to come through the gates and access Acme Dairy. We know that the communities in the area, Acme Dairy Road is a, is a big issue to them, and, you know, we haven't had a chance to get with them on them, but we can almost guarantee that they would oppose any kind of additional traffic on Acme Dairy Road, or we definitely can commit to that. And really, it's an undue burden. I do a lot of developments in Palm Beach County, and I can't think of a case where we're required, where the county's requiring a residential developer to allow another residential project to go through, through their project to provide access. And our client sees this as a real hardship for multiple reasons. I mean, you know, other than the wear and tear, the multiple trips, but also for financing and things that he's going to have to deal with, with his equity partners. In conclusion, we've done a lot of community outreach. We've really worked on the site plan, worked on the site to design, tried- tried to create a quality workforce housing project that has lots of open space. If you look at all the residential projects that have been developed in the ag reserve, none of the preserve is located within the development area. It's all off-site. So most of the people that live in the ag reserve don't even know where their preservation is. It could be anywhere. We have engaged our preserve area. We're making it part of our plan. We have conditions that, as part of the essential housing, we can't swap out preserve areas. So it is what it is. The project that we're presenting is consistent with the comp plan and the zoning code. When the board reviewed the land use change for essential housing, they supported the land use change. And now it's just waiting for the companion zoning application. So we respectfully request approval for the, for the Logan Ranch project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Matthew Boyd with Zoning Division here to present 2022 1755 Logan Ranch Residential. The subject 39.24 acre site is located on the southeast corner of Boynton Beach, Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. The existing future land use designation is Agricultural Reserve, as well as the zoning district is Agricultural Reserve. This application is contingent on the approval of the large-scale application, LGA 2023-14, to change the future land use designation from Agricultural Reserve to Essential Housing with underlining Agricultural, Agricultural Reserve. The applicant is requesting an official zoning map amendment to allow a rezoning from Agricultural Reserve Zoning District to Multiple Use Plant Development District on the 39.24 acres, along with a Type 2 variance to allow 100% overlap within the preserve parcel on the right-of-way buffers along the north and west property lines, and 100% overlap of the preserve parcel of the incompatibility buffer along the south property line. The surrounding zoning districts, as you can see, are AGR to the north and south, AGRPUD to the north and south, Agricultural Reserve to the east, and MEPD to the west. The preliminary site plan is indicating a proposed 60-40 development with 40% of the site, 15.4 acres of development area totaling 314 dwelling units, broken into six four-story multifamily, multifamily buildings with 264 units and 50 two-story town, multifamily townhomes. The remaining 60% is broken into two parcels encompassing 23.7 acre reserve areas. Yesterday, staff received revised conditions from the agent amending landscape, erm, and engineering conditions in Exhibits, Exhibit 2C, C2. To date, staff has received three contacts from public regarding this application. Two were just inquiring on the proposed development. And one was in opposition of Exhibit T, C2, Engineering Condition Number 10. Staff has recommended approval of the request, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibits C1 and C2 of the staff report, plus the added, add, add-in, delete. This ends my presentation, and staff is here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions of staff? Can you explain to me the staff's position on the connectivity between the two parcels? What the, what the issue is there and why that's important to?
Yeah, the reason that condition was applied to this project was because when Erickson comes in, or the Erickson, Erickson will have an entrance, right in, right out, and left-in entrance on Boynton Beach Boulevard. They won't have any access on Acme Dairy because they don't front on Acme Dairy. So if anybody from Erickson wants to go westbound on Boynton Beach Boulevard, they have to first get out on Boynton Beach, make a right turn, and then make a U-turn somewhere down the road. But if this interconnectivity is met, they can come through the Logan property, come to Acme Dairy Road, and then either go north on Acme Dairy to use the signal at Boynton Beach to make a left turn, or they can go straight on Joe Abruzzo, go to Lyons Road, and then use the signal at Boynton and Lyons Road to go westbound. But we understand, we heard the applicants, we can, you know, sit down with them between zoning committee, this meeting and the next BCC meeting and reconsider this condition, what can be done. But that was the reason why that condition was given.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I had a question on that, too. So currently, they don't have that ability now. So you're just adding that as a condition. So Erickson does not have the ability now, but you're, you're asking them to, Logan Ranch, to allow them to have that ability?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if we allow that liability, or if we allow that access, what is the, what is the liability that Erickson will assume for road maintenance, for access into a gated community in perpetuity? I mean, there, there has to be, you're just saying they, they're allowed access whenever they want, however they want, in order to get out on Acme Dairy. But there's got to be insurance liabilities, there's got to be, you know, concerns along that nature. I mean.
Yeah, we understand that, that's why.
They chose, they chose a property that doesn't have access to Acme Dairy. That's their site. They could have chosen a different site, right?
Right, right. We understand that. That's why I said we will reconsider that condition between now and the BCC.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we have cards. We will do the same thing and call up two people, go to separate podiums, and just state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes. So first is Jim, and I can't quite read the writing, but I think it might be Knight. And I have to apologize, Jim, in this card, I realized you had one for Item 6, too, and I did not call you up, so I apologize for that. And then Dagma Ross on the next podium.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. First, I want to acknowledge that I am the broker for the property. I want to put that on the record just because it's important, too. But the one thing I think that's, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense here is that interconnectivity between the two properties. I live in a non-gated residential community. I've lived there in a non-gated residential community my entire life. People come up and down the street as they like and whatever else, no big deal. I knew that when I was getting into it. I have friends and family that live in gated communities. And I think it creates a big burden having them come through another gated community. I couldn't imagine if I was Toll Brothers next to a GL community and telling somebody that, you know, people from Toll Brothers and Mizner Country Club get to go through a GL community or vice versa. I think this is a project that is important. It's providing essential housing, workforce housing that we need here in Palm Beach County. The residents overwhelmingly supported a $200 million bond issue to create this housing. This project's not using any of those funds for this housing and creating the workforce housing here. I request, I respectfully request that you all support this application with the removal of the interconnectivity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dagma Ross again. I have to say, this is really a terrific development. Mr. Del Samino has worked very hard and very long. And just putting part of an ag reserve preservation easement into something that the community will be able to use as a passive park. We are actually very grateful for that. I, I think it's going to be a great place to live. It's a great location. The interconnectivity, I love interconnectivity, going from one shopping center to another shopping center to get to that light. But this, interconnectivity, doesn't make any sense. You have a CLF that's coming on board with 1,200 beds, you know. And while most of them won't be driving, you have the employees, some of them will be driving, you know. It just, that interconnectivity, the way you have it drawn out, really does not make any sense. My main reason for speaking today is my concern with Acme Dairy Road. I heard in Ms. Morton's presentation that there is a 95-foot easement so that we do have the possibility to make Acme Dairy Road four lanes in the future? Can I ask that of engineering? Am I allowed? What is the, what is the, is there the ability on Acme Dairy Road to eventually turn that from a two-lane road into a four-lane road? Because not only are you going to have two schools, Canyon Trails, Canyon Lakes, and they're proposing some of Erickson, and this essential housing unit, all to go out as access onto Acme Dairy Road? I just want to make sure.
I don't know if staff can answer that at this moment? And I don't know if it's material to the application at this moment.
Traffic issue.
I think it's appropriate for her to finish her presentation, and then we will do any responses.
Is there enough setback to do for laning on Acme Dairy Road since it's such a nightmare? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Barbara Roth and Jeff Reynolds. Okay, all right, thank you. And then, Barbara, before you go, Brett Jel Samino, thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Barbara Roth, Vice President of Cobra. To be very clear, Cobra completely supports the essential housing use as we support the commerce use. We see the need, we think the location and the design are terrific. But we get back to the height issue, that 800-foot buffer to the communities, Ms. Morton showed that, that area. We feel if need be, could be reduced in order to reduce the height so that there are no four-story buildings. We understand the articulation, the need for variation. As a planning commissioner, I voted in favor of this for land use. And as Vice President of Cobra, I have advocated for this land use. I think the design is terrific, except for the four-story buildings component. To be very clear, Cobra represents 55 square miles of the unincorporated area of Palm Beach County. The ag reserve is just a portion of that. But this is the entrance to the ag reserve within the Cobra area. As you come under the turnpike, welcome to the ag reserve. We, we have signs. And for 42 years, Cobra has looked out for the welfare of its residents. So we would urge a redesign. We know that Ms. Morton is well up to that task. She did that in a Cobra area, which is not ag reserve, just two miles north of this in what's called Villages of Windsor, where the Board of County Commissioners kind of did a compromise. They said that that project could retain its number of units, the density of 187 units, but asked that Ms. Morton take that fourth story down. And she very cleverly was able to redesign and maintain the same number of units. So I would ask for that consideration because this is, this is our ag reserve. And that's a distinction that I think is being lost here. Once again, we're going to be coming through. And rest assured, Erickson, Erickson is going to be four stories. And perhaps with that 50-foot precedent that has now been allowed, you could push, one might argue that they would push for five stories. This is at the entrance to the ag reserve. I ask you to consider tweaking that height. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As a formality, I was not here to be sworn in if I need to be, or?
Got it, it's time.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Appreciate that and sorry. Good morning, Brett Jel Samino. I am the proposed developer for this project. And I've enjoyed working with the stakeholders in the community, the staff, and yourselves on the development of policy to help accommodate what we feel is a now a very thoughtfully configured and perfected essential housing project at a location that needs it desperately. I've, it's, it's a little bit emotional for me to now have garnered support from our, you know, peers in the agro-hood, if you will, to convert opposition into, you know, support, albeit with some conditions and some things that would desire some tweaking. But I think that's a display of how hard we have worked to change and reconfigure and tweak and try to design this in a way that is as least offensive as possible while also maximizing the efficiencies and the density of the project. Responding a little bit to how the site has evolved and is now configured, we've done our best to isolate the four-story buildings to the most interior part of the project, which abuts Erickson, which presumably is another four-story project. So it's 600 feet away from, you know, the Acme Dairy Corridor centerline and, you know, three football fields from our southern neighbors and insulated with two-story townhomes, which are, you know, candidly smaller than what is in our neighbors to the south in those very nice GL communities. So we've, we've designed it in a way, with a little bit of a method to the madness, to try to already address some of these architectural offenses and offer a diversity of housing that we feel the community gravely needs at a price point that's attainable to all of us, to Middle America. One of the issues that we've belabored, and I, you know, I guess I'll hit on it as well, is the concerns about the cross-access. It's, it's a functional obsolescence. It really impacts the quality and the safety and security of what we have to offer. To require a cross-access privately from one residential community to another, it just incites all sorts of concerns about the security and the safety on those streets when it's now transient traffic, not local neighbors driving in there. I'd love to see, you know, families raising kids and kicking soccer balls and riding bikes around here. And now it's a through fair. Now it's no longer a neighborhood street that's gated on both ends. Now, I've got an unknown number of cars with an unknown driver behind the wheel traversing a private community that has now lost, you know, appeal because of this condition that it's candidly not accessed anymore. It would be a lot like me driving down the southern terminus of Acme Dairy and requesting public access through Valencia Cove to get to Lyons Road. It would certainly be convenient, but I don't think it's a reasonable request. So for those reasons, I request your support with that condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cards? That's it? Okay.
If we may, and a bit of a rebuttal response to some of the comments that were raised. Since that was the last thing discussed about the connectivity between the Logan and the Erickson, I'd like to call to your attention that the development potential for both Logan and Erickson right now are, is one unit per, per five acres, if straight subdivided, and one unit per acre clustered if developed as a 250 minimum acre HGR PUD. Both of these applications have concurrent land use changes before the board that are asking for a tremendous amount of additional development that wouldn't otherwise be allowed without those concurrent future land use changes. So the idea of the connectivity, I mean, if you imagine in a perfect world where planners got to plan rather than reactively respond to applications that came in side-by-side concurrently, the, the planning and engineering staff would probably design a roadway with connectivity that went through this whole area from, you know, between Acme Dairy and the turnpike, looping down to Joe Abruzzo, as we did in the Lake Worth Corridor area. You've seen multiple applications coming forward in Lake Worth Corridor where we put in Polo Road on the TIM. We knew there was going to be multiple developments coming in back in the day. We put that roadway on the TIM, and we required, you know, the proper access. So the discussion, you know, it is, it is a bit self-created that there isn't an access. So the discussion, you know, it is a bit self-created that there isn't an access through these two communities. The property owners on each of these individual properties worked out their own contracts with their purchasers, and they happen to have the same agent, but they have different property owners seeking different developments at the same time. And county staff and the engineering department has looked very closely at the change to the comprehensive plan with adding all that additional entitlement, and we tried to come up with a redesign that didn't have, for example, Erickson staff going through Logan, to have some sort of shared right-of-way, shared access, shared configuration. We did the best we could, and that condition of approval stemmed from the inability to get the applicants to work together on a redesign. And also, we heard that there was resident opposition as well, but, you know, that was a compromise that we had came up with, and it's for the health, safety, and welfare for a tremendous amount of development at this corner and future residents of the ag reserve that don't live there yet. I mean, every single unit that's in Erickson today, and that is in the Erickson, when that comes forward as that proposal, all of those, that entitlement isn't there. So I just want you to keep that in mind with that condition. This is a bit self-created by these two applicants' inability to work together or redesign the site, and it is what it is. The other thing I wanted to point out is the height reduction that's proposed by Cobra. We have had a couple instances where the height has been reduced and the density hasn't been reduced with a future land use amendment running concurrent. Zoning cannot support a reduction in height on any of the residential development without a reduction in the dwelling units. This item already went to the board for transmittal on the number of dwelling units, it already went to the planning commission. So the discussion of any height reduction, in my opinion, is better addressed at the Board of County Commissioners meeting where they can in turn reduce the units in tandem, if it is to be done, to reduce that in tandem with the density. You have an application before you that doesn't have enough land area to meet the ag reserve preserve requirements without asking for a variance to overlap and reduce the buffer area, so keep that in mind. So reducing the height, yet keeping the same number of units unless all the units get shrunk, or they get teeny tiny heights, is just not something that we could support at this time. This site has maxed out every inch of land area for its parking, its recreation, its preserve, and on top of it, the extra special is it's adding on that variance to overlap the preserve with the buffer. So it's a conversation to me that can only be considered in tandem with the density. The density is typically not something that this board does, but the board does and the planning commission does, so I just wanted to point those things out. And I don't know if Wendy wants to add anything?
So I just want to add, although Erickson is not on the table here, it has been discussed multiple times. And so I just, I do want to put out that is an application that is under review by staff, it has not been certified. But yes, they are proposing a congregate living facility and a skilled nursing. And as of right now, for their proposed application that they have submitted, with the 1,192 beds for their CLF, and their 70 beds for their skilled nursing, the total required parking is 340. Their proposed parking is 762. And the reason why that is, is because there will be a component of independent living, independent living, meaning that they don't necessarily need all of the assistance, and they will be driving. So that is another component that you need to take into, why we are asking for the cross connectivity, because there was a statement made that they won't necessarily be driving. There will be people driving because there is independent living proposed. So again, Erickson not part of it, but it keeps getting brought up, and why we have concerns on cross-connectivity.
Okay, thank you. And then the question about the ultimate right-of-way for the Acme Dairy?
Olive Bailey with Land Development. So right now, I don't know of any plans for Acme Dairy to be expanded. The right-of-way does vary from 85 to 100 feet, so there could be opportunity, but we don't have any plans at this point.
Okay, thank you. Cross-examination? Having none, okay.
I have a question. I just had a question on the four-story that we're, what is the actual height, Jennifer? I don't know if you can, with the four-story, what?
Is that a pitched roof?
Jennifer Morton, those buildings haven't been designed yet, but, I mean, a typical four-story, whatever a typical four-story multifamily unit is, I will say that as part of the essential housing, does anything, any project more than 200 units requires a variety of housing types? So we do have to have two, whether it's, we chose two-story and four-story, but you can't have all three-story. So that's why we have the variety of types. Plus, we think it creates for a really nice community. You can have some townhouse-looking multifamily units, which tend to be larger, and then you have the four-story multifamily units which have the elevator. And I will tell you, all my multifamily clients are doing four-story product. Some are actually asking to go to five-story. We're not there, we haven't proposed that yet, but, I mean, when you think about sustainability and use of land and all that goes into providing a quality project, that's the direction that industry is going, is to go to four-story. I don't, I haven't done a, I mean, a three-story garden walk-up is kind of a dated look, I should say.
And before you go, I have one other question, and it's just a hypothetical, and I don't know if we can get to your view or not. So I'll ask my question, because I am of the agreement that the cross-access seems burdensome. However, listening to what the staff said, I can kind of see where that could be a benefit. So this is just a hypothetical question. Going through your site seems like that is just, to me, a no-starter. Is there any consideration, and I don't know if this would help, you know, you've got that, I think it's 390-feet buffer across Pointon Beach, is there any sense in creating, you know, maybe some kind of an easement there to get them across, but I don't know if it would not work with traffic and stacking? I'm just thinking about a way to resolve the situation, so.
Yeah. You know, that's our preserve area. I mean, as Quasi mentioned, we're happy to meet with traffic and look at this again, just as it's proposed with, through the development, you know, both gated communities, that doesn't work, but, you know, I think I have two clients that want to do what's best, and so we're happy to meet with traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, their preliminary site plan shows the four-story buildings at 42 feet, and there's six of them, one, two, three, six of them, and then the multifamily buildings that resemble townhouses, which there's seven of them, are indicated as 24 feet. We don't now have elevations, so it's just what's on the site plan that they proposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Gromman?
Yeah, so speaking to the height once again, and fully support staff's position on this. You know, we hear a lot of people get up, and I heard the speaker speak about, you know, a concern about four-story buildings. And to speak to Ms. Morton's point, you know, the three-story walk-up is an archaic way of building buildings. It might be the cheapest way to build it, but having an elevator and moving, being able to move furniture and do things like that is actually most convenient. The concept of essential housing is to build more of it, not less of it. So we always hear about, well, you know, we don't like the height, but no one ever says why. What's wrong with a four-story building? Who does it offend? And in addition to that, you have almost a 400-foot setback on one side of the property and 800-foot on the other side. I can tell you with absolute certainty, you wouldn't even be able to tell the height of the buildings from the roadway. I can take a picture of downtown buildings in almost any city, and depending on how I juxtapose the position, you couldn't tell the 200-foot building from 140-foot building, you certainly couldn't tell from 800 feet away. So I don't know, I just don't understand the concept of the objection, other than objecting because we're objecting, but I never hear a reason for the objection. A four-story building is going to be more efficient, it's going to be more convenient, especially if you have an elevator in it, it's going to create more workforce housing, and it's hundreds and hundreds of feet from any place where you can see it, with landscape buffers. So I fully support the application. I do think that the cross-access easement through the middle of the properties a little bit, I don't think I've ever seen that before, but I don't like that. Maybe there's some other way that things can be done. I don't know whether the traffic, whether the, well, the Erickson can sustain the traffic concurrency, if they can with their only entrance, that's fine, but as far as the height and the layout of this particular project, you know, I'm in agreement with staff that this is a great project and should move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner, we've got a...
I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 2022-1755 with a modification to the conditions of approval by striking engineering condition number 10.
And I'd like to second that.
Mr. Chair, just because the conditions only apply to one of the applications, maybe we can separate them out into two separate motions?
We've got two separate motions, 7A and 7B.
I think yours would be 7B, so if there could be a separate motion for 7A, and then 7B with that stipulation.
I'll move to approve 7A.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gromman, a second from Commissioner Kern, and this is for item 7B, oh, 7A, I'm sorry, 7A. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Now, 7B. And we have a motion on the table for 7B as amended.
As amended.
And I second it.
Second from Commissioner Gromman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you.
Ends our regular agenda and moves us over to comments.
Have any attorney, any comments?
No comments.
Zoning director?
No comments.
No comments?
No comment.
Hiding director, anybody else with any comments? Everybody ready to go home? Ready to go to work? All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.